So two weeks ago, we had a very good work session with the school district board of directors. And we talked about school resource officers. And tonight, we are, you know, again, you know, looking at public safety and are, you know, looking at police community, police and community engagement and oversight update. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Robbie, who will take us from here.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to echo what the mayor said and also thank everybody that's participated in a lot of work to get to this point. There's been a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions and analysis done. And I'm excited to have some recommendations for the council tonight. So we will be going, actually Aubrey, if you can put up the PowerPoint. Most of the information in these slides was also included in the staff report and in the packets and the memos. So we will be going through these slides fairly quickly. And if the council has any questions, please let us know so that we can get to the recommendations at the end. So if you can go to the next slide, Aubrey, thank you. So with me tonight are also Deputy Chief Mike Leader, who's going to talk about some of the current processes that are currently used in Hillsborough Police Department. We have Leah Turner, who's the Vice President of Hillsborough Police Officers Association, and grateful to have her willing to come, really grateful for the partnership that we have with HPOA. We have Assistant City Manager Rahim Harji, who's also going to talk a bit about the different models that we've looked at. And then I will conclude the presentation with some of the recommendations that we have for the council. Next slide. So going back to the August 18th work session as a reminder, there were several things that came up. And one of the things that the council asks us to look at is exploring a variety of oversight options and also different ways to engage the community. So we have those options again tonight, and we'll make some recommendations. We also spent some time talk, over the past couple of months, talking about ways that we can increase our equity training for our police officers. That's another thing that's come up. And so an update there is along with kind of a foundational equity training that we're currently creating with our equity team for all city employees. We've also engaged the services of Fair and Impartial Policing, which is a nationally respected and recognized provider of implicit bias awareness training. And they will be providing insight and resources for understanding the science of bias and its negative consequences in delivery of our work. So we're looking forward to be able to working with Fair and Impartial Policing for that training. As the mayor mentioned, two weeks ago, we also spent time talking about school resource officers with the school district, which was a great work session. We are in the process now of updating the memorandum of understanding. And once that is ready, then we'll be bringing that forward to the council as well. And finally, we spent some time talking about mental health and homelessness programs. Kahoots is a good model that a lot of people brought up from Eugene. We have had conversations with the county. The Washington County has a program that's called the Mental Health Response Team, and we have resources dedicated to that and really appreciate the county being such strong partners there. There's a lot of work to be done in that, and those are not easy things to coordinate sometimes because there's so many agencies involved, including WACA, which is the Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency, if I got that right. And they're the ones that handle our 911 calls. So a lot of work to be done there, and we've had some good progress in those discussions. Next slide, please. So a couple of other items that we've worked a lot on is figuring out ways that we can have more continuous community engagement. And again, some of our recommendations tonight are going to address that specifically. And we've also had ongoing communication and policy decisions in an effort to try to bring the public into these decisions and be transparent with them as well. Listen on this, or show on this slide is a picture of the website. If you go to the city's website, we've not only updated the Hillsborough Police Department website with a lot of information and department policies, but we've also added this website, which is the Police Review and Advancement webpage. And this includes all of the information that we've gone over the past six to seven months, decisions that the council's made, changes that the city has made, all of the different briefings and work session material is all on there. And it's a wealth of information that we wanted to make sure and share with everybody. So next slide, please Aubrey. And with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Deputy Chief Mike Leader to talk about some of our internal processes.
Okay, thank you Robbie, appreciate it. We can go to the next slide, Aubrey. Thank you. So I'm going to talk tonight, just an overview of the current oversight structures that we have within HPD, and that there really are two components to that. One is the investigation of community member and internal complaints. And the second that we'll get to in just a few minutes is the investigation of use of force and force-related incidents. So we'll go through those, and we'll get into some data as well. There's a lot of information in your council packets if you're following along at home that's in there as well. I can go to the, well, actually, hold that slide for just a minute, Aubrey. So really, when we look at the investigation of community member complaints, which are usually external, and then administrative complaints that are internal, those tend to break down into three tracks of review. The first track is an administrative review, which is something that's a little bit lower level, and it's for allegations that are generally best resolved at the supervisory level, not serious allegations of misconduct, but you know, matters needing to be reviewed nonetheless. The second is the Internal Affairs Investigation Route. It's a more formalized process. There's some contractual issues that come into play, and there's a more rigid policy structure there. That's reserved for pretty serious allegations of misconduct, things like bias, truthfulness, potential criminal conduct, and things that could result in economic sanction. We have about five or six of those a year, so it's not, it's not, it's not overly common. And the third track would of course be criminal investigations. Those are fairly infrequent, but if we develop reasonable suspicion that a crime may have been committed by an employee during an investigation, we would pause and move into that track. Before we go to the next slide, one, one point that's very important, we talk about employees here, we're talking about all employees in the police department. There's been a lot of focus, I know, on the sworn personnel, you know, in the last six to eight months. But our, our complaint process and our policy manual applies to all 198 employees we have here. So we can move to the next slide. So this is in your packet as well, this is kind of an anatomy of a, of a complaint. And I'll run through this for everybody. It's a really a flow chart that kind of walks through the process and how we can get, how we get from point A to point B. So if you look in the upper left corner, you'll see the complaint itself is received, and we would, we would track that through a software called Blue Team. That's really our forward-facing software for the IA Pro database that we use to archive things like commendations, complaints, use of force, even things like lost property. It's kind of a way to keep track of some of the administrative processes here. Complaints can be received through a variety of means. We accept anonymous complaints through our website. We've gone to pretty detailed steps to really provide the anonymity. I think we even strip out IP addresses at this point. So the complaints received, generally speaking, it's going to be routed to a direct supervisor of the affected employee. And that supervisor is going to be tasked with doing some intake on the complaint itself in terms of talking to the complainant, gathering data, reviewing police reports, potentially body cam footage, things of that nature. There's a decent amount of work that goes in to the front half or on the front half. And so as you can, as you follow along and you look at supervisor intake, there's some critical topics that the initial supervisor needs to consider and address. And that's first and foremost, is it alleging serious misconduct in this complaint? Things like bias, criminal conduct, integrity matters, excessive force, or anything that could result in economic sanction against the employee if sustained. So if the answer to that question is no, we move into a less, move into the administrative review process. And that's an investigation that's conducted by supervisors. They conduct interviews, gather evidence, and they will route their summary and their findings up the chain to the division commander or their designee. Generally speaking, those are, like I said, matters that can be best resolved at the supervisory level. They don't involve economic sanction. They might involve disciplinary action in the form of a reprimand. There's always the possibility that they get into that investigation, and it's more serious, and they realize they can reclassify that through the Internal Affairs Route. So if you look at the supervisor intake portion again, let's say that this complaint, this allegation appears to involve, you know, one of those critical matters that you see listed below. If the answer to that's yes, the supervisor would route that through their chain of command to the division commander. And the division commander would need to evaluate the information that they have at that point, the intake information, and make a determination if there is any indication of criminal conduct, that would go a different track. We would refer that to an outside agency at that point. We pause any internal investigation. We would pretty much step back at that point. Well, not pretty much, we would step back at that point. We notify the district attorney of the impending investigation, and we would recuse ourselves and let the outside agency conduct their investigation. Of course, we cooperate with logistics and things of that nature. The division commander looks at the complaint and the totality of it, and they do not believe it involves criminal conduct, but that it does involve potential serious misconduct. They would route that to the Office of Professional Standards, which is overseen by a lieutenant, and there's two sergeants and a professional staff, a non-sworn employee that works in there as well. And that would move down the Internal Affairs process, which is a very structured process. There's formal notification of the employee, and that's set by contract and policy. The Office of Professional Standards would complete that investigation, they would draft an investigative report, and they would refer that report back to the division commander to make findings, dispositions, and make a determination if the complaint is sustained or not sustained. And if it is sustained, it would go down the disciplinary track to determine a disposition. And I just want to bounce back over to the criminal side of that one more time. If we did have a situation where there was a criminal investigation, you know, criminal charges are filed, that is a predetermined process that it would go through, and at the end of it, we reevaluate the case. If there were no charges filed, the chief or myself would receive that information from the outside agency. We'd refer that back to the commander for an assessment on which direction, which direction to go at that point. And we can, we can move to the next slide. So moving into the use of force review process itself, there is a, there is a flow chart that we'll get to on the next slide. And we essentially classify the use of force and the review of use of force into two tracks. One is called minimally, minimally intrusive force, and the second is intermediate or significant force and/or special circumstances. And you know what, let's go to the next slide, Aubrey, and I'll dive into the flow chart here and provide some stuff.
Would you, would you like me to bring up the PDF so I can zoom in?
Yeah, I think that might be easier. This is really small font in this. There we go. So as you're zooming in, I'll begin to work through this. So we start at the very top of the chart, obviously, with the force response event itself, where one of our officers has used force on a call for service or in a situation with a citizen or resident. That triggers an entry into Blue Team, so all force response or response incidents are entered into Blue Team. And that generally needs to occur the day of the incident, so we're timely in our entries. And then it's, it's broken down from there, as you can see on the left is minimally intrusive force, on the right is our intermediate and significant force options. And the difference really lies in two areas. One, in the fact that intermediate and significant force trigger a more detailed after-action review that goes further up the chain of command with additional checks and balances. Minimally intrusive force still goes up the chain of command, two levels. It goes from the reviewing sergeant or the reviewing sergeant to the lieutenant, and lieutenant needs to make a decision if it's within policy or not. If it is within policy, it's archived in IA Pro. And if it's outside of policy or if there are additional concerns, you know, that could flow through the administrative review process, it could flow through the Internal Affairs process, or it could flow into a force review board as well. So Aubrey, can you scroll down just a little bit? So we'll move into the intermediate and significant force options. So again, those reports are submitted by the officer to their sergeant or supervisor, depending on their rank. That sergeant is responsible for completing a detailed after-action review that looks at the totality of the event and tries to determine if it's within policy and consistent with training. I think we might need to slide more to the right side of the page. Yeah, there we go. Their review is then routed to a lieutenant. The lieutenant reviews the event, and they need to write either a concurring or dissenting opinion and make their own finding as well as to whether the events, you know, within policy and consistent with training. Lieutenant then forwards that after-action review to the division commander. And you can see, if you scroll down just a little bit further, the different tracks that can take. If the lieutenant feels the event is reasonable, that would of course get forwarded to the commander, the commander would need to review that and make a final determination as to whether or not it was within policy and consistent with training. For medial training, you know, an event can still be within policy, but we may look at that and determine that it requires remedial training. That would follow the training plan and then eventually get routed to the commander. And then, of course, the last box would be if the, if the force is unreasonable, we would flow through a more formalized process. And I think it's important to note two things. One, the commander can convene a force review board or initiate an internal affairs investigation at any point if they have concerns. And number two, what may be significant force in one situation, particularly based on circumstances or the age of the involved individual, may be considered minimally intrusive force in another. For instance, escorting a healthy young adult male to the ground is probably minimally intrusive force. If that same application was done against somebody with disabilities, that would of course trigger an after-action review, would be in the special circumstances category at that point. So I think we can move into the next slide, Aubrey, at this point. Thank you. Okay, so our complaint data, as I mentioned earlier, we have two, two forms of complaints. We have administrative complaints that are generated internally, and then we have community complaints that are typically generated externally or from outside agency partners. We go to the next slide. This is a little bit difficult to read, but for administrative complaints in calendar year 2019, we had a total of 33 administrative complaints, and there were 52 violations alleged amongst those 33 complaints. We had 26 of those ended up being sustained, five of those ran through the Internal Affairs process. And we had, let's see, four for administrative reviews. We can move to the next page. So community complaint data. You can see that from 2019, from 2018 to 2019, you know, calls for service went up by approximately 1,000 calls for service. The complaints themselves in the community, we received one up as well. And there's some different reasons for that, if we, we can dive into that more later, if people want to inquire further on that. Okay, we can move to the next slide. Thanks. Okay, so for 2019, you can see that we had 65 total allegations, and that's from, I believe, 36 citizen complaints that came in. And you can see that none of those resulted in an Internal Affairs investigation. The vast majority of those were field mitigated, and 14 of those allegations, 14 of those 65 allegations were sustained. Hope we can go to the next slide. So our use of force data. Again, calls for service went up by about 1,000 calls between 2018 and 2019. We had 72 force events in 2018 that went up by 10, to 82 force events in 2019. Still a very, very low, you know, percentage of calls for service, of course. And we can move to the next slide, I'll add some additional commentary on that. So there is a very detailed use of force summary that's attached in the council packet. It's embedded here as a link. It's fairly lengthy. I think in the interest of time, we'll, we'll avoid diving into that unless there's specific questions. But on your left, you can just see a breakdown of those, of those 82 force events. You can see that the, the majority of those were, you know, were employed to effect an arrest, and the stats are there on the left side of the screen if you're, if you're interested in that. And I think at this point, that's the last slide we have, Aubrey, for me. I think that moves into Leah Turner's presentation from HPOA.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you, Leah.
Great, thank you. If you want to go ahead and go to the next slide, Aubrey, please. So good evening, my name is Leah Turner, I'm the Vice President of the Hillsborough Police Officers Association, which is often referred to as the HPOA. HPOA is the exclusive representative of the collective bargaining group at the Hillsborough Police Department. I want to start by thanking the city for inviting HPOA to present to all of you information related to HPOA's role in the professional standards investigations and disciplinary process. In partnership with the city and the police department, HPOA shares the desire to ensure that our members adhere to professional standards and conduct themselves professionally and lawfully. Next, I want to express thanks to all of our members for the trust they have given me to represent them and help to bring their voice to you in this very important conversation. As you see on the screen, all members of the HPOA are represented by executive board made up of five elected positions. Currently, the HPOA board includes two patrol officers, two detectives, and one member of professional staff. In accordance with the Public Employees Collective Bargaining Act, commonly known as PECPA, HPOA and the city together must collectively bargain in good faith about employment relations, which include matters concerning benefits, hours leave, grievance procedures, safety issues, and other conditions of employment. This bargaining results in the collective bargaining agreement, which is commonly referred to as the CBA, or simply the police contract. Per PECPA, HPOA has the legal obligation as the exclusive representative of the collective bargaining unit to represent its members. Next slide, please. Part of HPOA's role is to represent a member during a professional standards investigation that may result in discipline. As defined in the CBA, this includes economic sanctions such as suspension, demotion, or termination. HPOA is required by law to represent a member to ensure that the employee's rights are maintained, that the professional standards investigation process and disciplinary processes are followed, and that any discipline imposed is fair, reasonable, and just. This is consistent with any labor union's role and responsibility to a member of a collective bargaining unit going through a disciplinary process. Next slide, please. The professional standards process, the disciplinary process, the employee's rights, employer's rights, and dispute resolution processes are defined in the CBA and in city and police department policy, which are bargained at the mutual agreement of the city and the HPOA as set forth by the PECPA law. Finally, I want to say, and what is perhaps most importantly, most important to all of us, it is important to share that HPOA wants all employees to be accountable for their actions or inactions in a fair and reasonable way. HPOA's desire and goal for accountability includes for ourselves as individuals and our friends or other coworkers around us, including our members and employees of the police department who are not members of the HPOA. Each member of the HPOA strives for the highest level of professionalism and is proud to serve this community. Regardless of what is going on in the world, HPOA members come to work day in and day out, prepared to help people, to protect and to serve with compassion. Firm to this mission, HPOA members hold each other to a high standard and work to continue to improve this department every day. To be clear, in this presentation, we want to state, HPOA's role is not to cover up or hide police misconduct. Rather, HPOA's role in the professional standards investigation process and the disciplinary process, which is defined by law and the CBA, is to represent HPOA members, no matter the allegation against them, in order to ensure their rights are maintained and lawful processes are followed. So thank you, that's the end of my portion of the presentation, I'll pass it on to Rahim.
Thanks Leah. Next slide, please. So just a quick overview on how oversight committees or boards are generally formed. A lot of this material, the details are in your packet, so I won't go into too much detail. So the first general way that these committees or boards are formed is as a result of recurring problems that the law enforcement agency is experiencing. And the federal agency, which is the Department of Justice, usually comes and steps in and requires the agency to go through certain things and issues them a consent decree. The second way is where the agency has identified a recurrence, a recurring problem that happens, and they want to be a little more proactive. So they decide that, you know what, we're going to go and implement a, some type of oversight board or committee. But it's usually tied to a specific problem or a pattern of problems. And the last one is when a specific incident triggers a oversight board or committee. And these are usually something that's high profile, that's in the news, and tied to police misconduct. One thing that is important to note, especially from the material you have in your packet, it's more focused on if oversight structures exist, what could they look like? Not whether oversight bodies or structures are right for the organization. So we wanted to point that out just as context for the next slide. So if you go to the next slide. So based on the research we've done, there's generally four types of oversight models, and I'll go through them very quickly. The first one is an investigative type of model where citizens investigate allegations of police misconduct, and they recommend their findings to the chief of police. This often involves a multi-member board, and it's represented by community members. This is a way for the community members to be included in the process. Usually, they're just restricted to oversight of specific cases when complaints have been filed. They don't tend to focus on major policy issues or like organizational change. They are expensive to, to implement just because of the costs that are required to investigate some of the complaints. And it may duplicate some efforts already being done by the Internal Affairs Group. So for our case, it'd be the Office of Professional Standards that exists within the police department. The second type, which is a review and an appellate type of model, is where police officers investigate allegations, develop those findings, and the citizens review those findings and recommend that the chief of police approve or accept, approve or reject those findings. It's similar to the first one, but it's just a different nuance on when the, the board gets involved. Again, it opens up the opportunity for community members to get in, to provide their input. It's limited in scope, what the powers of that board typically does, they are, they usually just handle specific cases. And again, here, they don't tend to focus on major policy issues, just more on specific incidents. The third type is an auditor or monitor type of approach, where the, they're, a body or a person has some type of authority over the police department, and they engage in day-to-day processes. It is structured more like an evaluate and review performance of the organization. They are more focused on systemic change rather than resolution of a specific issue. And these can be costly to implement just because it stands up a whole nother arm. The last one is a policy and process advisory system. These are set up primarily to help to shape or manage policy or help the head of the law enforcement agency in certain things. They're usually a board that is a volunteer board, and it's in, the advisory system that's in place helps create a relationship between the public and the law enforcement agency. Some, there's a hybrid approach to this sometimes as well, and they could include review of specific incidents, but they could also just look at certain things like community engagement. This one is a little more open and has a lot more room for tailoring it to what's right for a community. And based on our research of other communities and what they've done, there hasn't been an organization that's just used one of these. They've always used a combination of one of these four. And with that, I'll turn it over to Robbie to go over our recommendations.
Thanks Rahim, and thanks everyone for all of the input in the presentation. So Aubrey, if you go to the next slide, we have a few recommendations we're going to make tonight to the council. First, I just wanted to go over some of the factors that we, that we considered when talking about this. And the first was, what does our data show? As you all know, a lot of communities across the country are wrestling with these same questions, and everybody can make them up with different answers for their communities. And so we want to make sure we do something in Hillsborough that makes sense for Hillsborough and is reflective of the data that we've gone over. We wanted to look at how do we create more opportunities for dialogue within the community? We've heard that over and over from the council, from the community of, there's a, there's a, there's long been a history in Hillsborough Police Department of community policing and attempting to reach out to the community, and, and we want to continue that. We want to figure out how do we reach out to those communities that don't feel hurt? We want to figure out, how do we reach out to those communities that don't feel hurt right now and get their input right into the police department? The third is, what can we do to improve our existing systems? Deputy Chief Leader went through all of those internal processes, and I think it shows just how much detail is involved when, when, when complaints occur or, or inquiries and investigations. It's a very complicated process, and there's always ways that we can look at to try to improve those systems. And finally, how do we support our police department? I, I want to go back to something I mentioned a couple of months ago in a work session. We tend to put a lot on the backs of our police department, and, and we're not alone. When, when complications and challenges come up, more often than not, they get put, they get given to our police department. And, and so, if we're going to ask that of them, we need to figure out how to support them and give them the resources and the processes and protocols to support them in those jobs. And so, that's another thing we tried to think about as we came up with these recommendations. Next slide, Aubrey. So, the first recommendation that we have is, is a simple one, and that is to track everything that we have in a professional standard software. Now, currently, we track most things, but there are occasions where some of the lower level, maybe complaint or something, a phone call was made that we feel we can also include. And we also want to ensure that we have a standardized response to all of those. Again, we do that pretty well right now, but we want to make sure that everybody that files some kind of complaint or inquiry, that they receive some kind of a standardized formal disposition letter, just so that they know that the matter was looked into and how it was resolved. We also want to increase the role of our Office of Professional, Professional Standards in the review processes. So, they are the ones that do these investigations, these internal affairs investigations and others. But we also want to be able to have them, you know, start doing, doing more analysis of the data, trying to identify if there's trends, you know, that we need to be aware of as a city. So, increasing their role of the Office of Professional Standards is also going to be important. Next slide. Our next recommendation is, is a large one, and that is that we would like to establish a police community advisory group. And this kind of falls in that type four approach that Raheem kind of talked about. So, we want to give an opportunity to the, to the community to have a voice in policing policies and programs. We want to provide an ongoing forum for addressing community concerns and provide more transparency to the public. This group would be formed from all, all different types of members of the community. We would look to recruit members from all of our different communities of color, from our youth, from our business community, from our faith-based community, from nonprofits. We want to get those perspectives, and that group would then meet regularly with the police chief, directly with the police chief, to be able to talk and ask questions and provide ideas and, and let our police chief in the police department know how they're feeling and, and concerns that they have. And, and we are excited about the prospect that that could bring, and, and again, giving our, our police chief in the police department more access to those members of our community. Next slide. The second thing we want, or the third thing we want to recommend is establishing an internal use of force review board. If you go back, we don't need to go back and look at it, but it's a very lengthy process. And what we want to do is figure out a way to get kind of more eyes into that process. And so, we would set up a review board that includes HPD staff. It also includes a member from the city manager's office, and it would include the city's risk manager. And the purpose of that board would be to evaluate all of the available information, reports, evidence from the incident, and evaluate the force used through the lens of applicable law and trying to, and talking about training and objective, reasonable is given the totality of the circumstances. So, again, our, our point there is trying to get more eyes on it to make sure that people agree on, on those cases, and if necessary, recommend that some of them may be reexamined to the police chief and the command staff. And one important note here, again, is that the final disposition and decisions on, on those, on those cases still rests with the police chief and the command staff as well. Next slide. So, those are our recommendations for the council to consider, based on the conversation tonight and the outcome of this work session. We would then notify the public and the police department staff of these outcomes and the decisions made. We would begin to implement those improvements, first of all, to those existing oversight systems, some of which we've already begun to do. And then, we would start working with the community to establish the police community advisory group and also establish the internal use of force board. There's a lot of work that will go into that, especially the, the police community advisory group. We would want to do adequate notifications and communications with the community. We'd want to work with our community partners to make sure we're getting word out and be able to recruit a, a strong pool of people that would be interested in, in that role. So, those are the recommendations that we have. I just wanted to, again, thank everybody that's contributed to this. A lot of work has gone into this. And ask the council if you have any questions for us.
This is Counselor Al Care. I really appreciate the example of what happens with a complaint and how it travels, and the example of the excessive use. And prior to your last few comments, Robbie, I was wondering, so, as the complaint travels, is it going to just one person, or is it going to a panel of some kind? But I really appreciate that there's thought behind putting together some kind of a, a review board. My question about it is, how would you solicit? Like, who would participate in that? I also appreciated hearing perspective from the union and ensuring rights and responsibilities of staff of the police officers who are serving us is very important and to respect that process as well. And then, finally, for the advisory, it's important, what kind of advisory really is going to make a difference? And I'm kind of thinking, why wouldn't we have more than one kind? And for the community advisory, my questions would be, how would we go about recruiting people? And why should they want to participate? So, when I, when I say, how are we going to recruit people? Are we going to be looking for specific characteristics and qualifications to decide who's going to be on that? It would be important to know what that process is going to be, but very much appreciated the entire presentation for tonight. So, thank you.
Absolutely. And if I could respond to a couple of those questions, Counselor Al Care. So, on the first question about the internal review board, so our intention would be that that would be staffed by not only personnel from Hillsbrook Police Department, but also at least one member from the city manager's office, and also one member from our HR department, which, or our risk management division of the HR department. So, those would be the individuals that would be that second set of eyes that would review all of those different instances. And then, on your second question, you're right, that, that will be crucial to getting this right, is how we actually recruit for those, those people that want to participate. And I would envision that we would work, you know, we have a lot of relationships with people like Central Cultural and Bienestar and Adelante Mujeres and a whole bunch of community organizations. We would want to work with them. We already have some relationships that people have with the city, but our goal would be to do a tremendous, a very strong outreach to the community so that people that are interested can apply. And then, I can't sit here and tell you that there will be, you know, one person that fits in a box, you know, in all these different boxes. We want to get as diverse group as possible, you know, with diverse perspectives. And again, that's why I would go with, we want someone from our youth, right? Because they provide a very different perspective. We want someone from the business community. So, our goal would be to establish a, a wide variety of perspectives to be able to recruit from and choose from, and I, I would hope that we'd have a lot of interest in this, in this, in this group.
I, the Latino Policy Council of Washington County is working with the Sheriff's Department in an advisory type of a role to review their processes. And so, I, I'm not envisioning that of how, what the makeup is going to be for this, but I, I'm just mentioning that because you may want to have conversation with, either with the Sheriff's Department or the Latino Policy Council on why they're doing it and how's it working.
Thank you. That's good to know. And I should have acknowledged, I failed to acknowledge, Chief Coleman obviously is also on the call there with Deputy Chief Leader as well. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, Robbie, this is Counselor Allen. I was actually thinking that we were going to discuss the, the different types of civilian oversight models that were presented in the packet. On page five, you're not going to be able to pull it up, but 552 for anybody that's following along. There's like five different options: investigative, review, appellate, auditor. You know, I'm curious what council thinks is the right model, and I think I'm more curious from you, which of those models do you think is most appropriate?
Sure. Well, I can start, and, and so, what we're proposing is kind of a hybrid, but it, it is type four, the policy and process advisory system. So, that, that's why we'd be setting up this community police advisory group. So, that's where it's the type four, when in going in the PowerPoint. I'm sorry, I don't have the page in the packet pulled up. That's the approach that we believe is appropriate for Hillsborough because it, it brings in the community, in our opinion, better than most, and tries to get those diverse perspectives on there. So, does that answer your question?
It does, and, and I like type four as well. I think what's important for me, and I, and I don't, I don't see this in there, is some process of professional independent review. In other words, you know, with our finances and finance committee, we, we hire auditors to come through and, you know, evaluate our finances and work with staff and, and get that other perspective. I don't know if, you know, with 82 uses of force, if it makes sense to have somebody full-time doing that, but maybe by recommendation from this committee, that could be something on a case-by-case basis that could be brought in. You know, so it's not just internal, but there's a mechanism by which external review can happen out of that process. So, it could be another law enforcement agency, it could be the county, it could be something, but some way to trigger it. Do you have any thoughts on that?
This might be one where I'd look to Chief Coleman to, to answer. I, I would say, obviously, we could certainly entertain that. I do know that we have a relationship with, relationships with other departments. We, we work with other agencies like the Center for Policing Equity and others who do come in and do certain types of audits and work with our police departments. But Chief Coleman, if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, thank you, Robbie, and thank you, Counselor Allen. There, there are, there are places we can go to look for, and I'm imagining that, I guess I need some clarification. We already do it on individual incidents. Deputy Chief Leader talked about, if we have a concern about something potentially being criminal, most of the time, it turns out, for instance, if we ask another agency to investigate, or if it goes to the district attorney's office, that we usually err on the side of being overly cautious about going through that process, and very rarely are they considered criminal. So, that would be a separate incident. That also goes through state review, a DPSSST at times. So, there, there are outside eyes looking at the most serious transgressions as they come across. We also, just by a lot of what Vice President Turner talked about, between our own legal advisors, city attorneys, labor attorneys, HPOA, we're constantly evaluating how investigations transpired, what were places that we, what were things and processes that we could have done better. We've made adjustments accordingly. If it's a review of the entirety of the process, and how does the, how do the mechanisms work and all that, then, yeah, then we'd be talking probably about a consulting firm and that. And I don't think we, you know, we would want to understand what the goal would be as we inform that consulting firm or other agency, perhaps. Is the goal to, you know, make suggestions for improvements, or is the goal just to take a look at it and see if it's, it has veracity to it, that it's, that's a stable system that yields objective results?
So, I would, I think that we can all understand that one of the reasons why we're having this work session right now is because of, of race and, and the relationship between police officers and people of color, specifically in the demographics around use of force. Use of force is used more on people that are black and Hispanic. And so, for instance, we trigger an investigation, I believe, if, if force is used on somebody that's elderly. You know, I would, I would want it to also be triggered if it's used on a person of color. You know, so long as the trend tends to be that more force is used on people of color, I want to know why. And I think that question can best be answered by an outside agency, not necessarily internally.
Well, aren't you, first of all, assuming that, that we have that kind of issue?
We do. To look at the annual report, some numbers were highlighted, but of the 82 use of force incidents, 36 were people that were white, and 38 were people that were black or Hispanic. And we know that that doesn't track with the demographics of our community. So, probably, you know, look, maybe all of those are justified, but I'm just suggesting maybe somebody should look at that, and it shouldn't be somebody internally.
I agree. I think that there should be community input. And so, maybe forming a group that is reflective of the 40% people of color here in the city to examine those kinds of issues, to see what input they could provide to you, and understanding what might be happening in the community and what issues might be existing between the community and the police, perceived or real.
Olivia, I'm curious, and just asking a clarification question. Do you see that as kind of fundamentally different from that, the, the proposed, the proposed by the city manager proposal of the, the policy review committee? Or would that be something that the policy committee would do?
Yeah, because it would give the Latinx community an opportunity to give input on a case and examine, was there use of force? Would they have an opportunity to give some input, especially if there are historic examples throughout the history of this city and folks of color? And we can talk about Latinx, that community, the relationship they have had with police. So, I think it would be important to get input from leaders in that community to help police understand, well, what should they do different, or what should they be looking at different? Or why do people feel like they're being profiled, and that is not the intention of the police? So, I do think that there's some benefit to having some people examine this, and I think it would also help build relationship between communities of color and the police. It would help establish some trust, so beyond Latinx.
Counselor Al Care, if I could respond to that as well, I, I think, I think that would be our goal with this new group, to be able to ask those types of questions and raise those types of issues. And that would be the point, is to be able to talk directly, again, reporting directly to the police chief about those concerns, and, and then, based on those concerns, I think, is where we can really dive into deep topics that, that group that we form would be able to bring up. So, that would be the intent.
Well, Robbie, I, I don't want to detract from anything you said, but I think what Kyle and Olivia are talking about is a reviewing of case-by-case issue, not just looking at overall policy. I may be wrong if I'm misunderstanding them, but it sounds, it sounds to me like you're talking about a group that would review any use of force issue, and, you know, I'm still stewing on this. I've been thinking about this for quite a while.
I appreciate it. Well, Kyle said that it would be like an external group, just like the finance committee has a group that comes in and does an audit for us. So, I, I would, I would see it that way.
If I could, well, one thing you need to understand, though, and we've discussed this before, is that that kind of an oversight committee tends to either evolve into a rubber stamp for the police department because they're so close to them, or it tends to become totally adversarial to the police department over every tiny issue, or, good grief, the patrolman looked at me funny. And so, it's a very difficult thing. It sounds really good on paper, but a lot of times, those things just evolve into a waste of time on both sides.
Maybe, maybe it could be that, but maybe it means something more.
Yeah, I, I certainly, you know, I, I think that there's... Yeah, I, I certainly, you know, I, I think that there's there, there could be some value. It all depends upon the qualifications. And you know, the doing our due diligence to find, you know, to know the questions we want to ask any entity that would take a look at this and make sure that it was, you know, driven by a data approach and scientific approach to things. You know, the one thing I wanted to mention is certainly there are things we're doing across the board to try and mitigate any disparities between races, genders, identities. It's, we realize that it's a multi-pronged approach. It's everything. And it's actually part of how, you know, we're in the very early stages of it. I don't know if it's mature enough to fulfill this role. But the way we identify people that would be locally engaged in things like committees and advisory boards is to build the very relationships that we're putting a lot of effort behind right now. So we know who to turn to when we need somebody to, you know, help us do better, help us understand how things transpire through their eyes and to just, you know, make a more trusting relationship.
And I just want to say that your leadership is key in this. And that's the way that you're working to establish that kind of work with Latinx small businesses and the chamber. You, you can do this. I have a lot of faith that not only you have the skills, but you, you truly are wanting to make things better and have better relationships. So I trust that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Alker. I, I've said it before, but it's always important to me that that, that kind of drives, that that drives the police department. I'm just a reflection of what the general attitude is here. So thank you.
Kyle, were you done? I know that I just wanted to make sure because I didn't want to step in before you had finished all your thoughts, if you weren't.
The history might be, oh, there you go.
Okay. Thought he was just ignoring me. It's just, did you hear me, Kyle, or no?
I did. I didn't know you were, I didn't know that you was for to me. I thought that was to Olivia.
My bad. No, I know you were still going down a train and you guys had a great conversation. I wasn't trying to say that Olivia, it was natural. I just didn't want to move on before you had kind of platform.
I'll just reiterate, you know, I think that luckily there's not too many cases of uses of force in our community. You know, the, the document I'm looking at is the 2019 Use of Force Summary, page three. So there's not too many, but you know, unfortunately, black people are disproportionately represented in use of force. And same thing with people that are Hispanic. And, you know, I think the fact that we had this work session and we didn't address that right off the bat just underscores the, the need in my mind that we need to have some independent eyes looking at this. So I hope that the system that we implement includes some mechanism, either on every case, either on every case of a person of color or just through the, the committee themselves, you know, requesting it after they review the information. But I think it needs to be there.
Well, it seems to me that if you're going to have such a thing, it should be on every case and not just every case of of a person of color because you're automatically making the decision right off the top that that's a discriminatory practice. If you chop and slice and dice all the data, you may find out that all the use of force involves people who are poor, no matter what race they are. And so I think that if you're going to actually go this way that and have somebody that's going to review all use of force, that they ought to review all of them and not just people of color.
And also to be clear, one year's worth of data, right? I mean, you know, if I could see 10 years' worth of data, it might change my mind. I mean, there could be some good trends in there. You know, so I'm just looking at this, this, this number and I'm just suggesting that there could be a there there and it should be looked at.
I don't necessarily think that that's bad. I'm just saying that the categories as just one thing, I think is a mistake. If you're going to start looking at use of force cases, you need to look at all because there may be some other correlation that's got nothing to do with race. We don't know. We don't have the data.
We have data from the state showing that black and brown.
Let me finish, please. Hillsborough is not the state of Oregon. And we don't have all that data at this point. We have certain data and we're making assumptions from it. And I'm just saying that, hey, if you want to have a committee that's going to evaluate all use of force, it should be all use of force. That's all I'm saying. Make no assumptions one way or another. Take a look.
So I apologize, Fred, but I do want to point out the state report and showing that black and brown were in Hillsborough were disproportionately pulled over more than other people, more than white people. So when there is data that's existing, what Kyle's pointing out, we should pay attention to it. This is, we could certainly develop and you could recruit people to participate on a panel that represents white people. If that would make it more fair, but the data points to that there's disproportionate numbers in one direction and we really do need to look at that. And it's not fair to say that we should look at everybody because we're going to look at this. We should be looking at this. If there's disproportion, there's disproportion. And I believe that our police department made corrections so that we are no longer going to be reported like that by the state.
Well, and I think, you know, I don't disagree with most of what you just said, but my point is you go in to something trying to find an objective standard and make an objective review. You can't get there if you start out with a preconceived notion. So the preconceived notion should be that use of force is bad. And anybody who's a recipient of that ought to be reviewed. That's all I'm saying.
If I could add maybe a little bit to this, I would agree, going back to Counselor Allen's point. You're absolutely right. And that is one of the things that this, this group that we would formulate. This is one of the areas that we would expect them to want to dive into deeply. It's, it's one of the most important areas that we're looking at right now. And so during my presentation, I talked, for example, about the increased role of the Office of Professional Standards, right? Not just doing investigations, but actually doing trend studies and trying to figure out what are the trends going on with, with our data? And then maybe that's information we could share with this group, right? And talking, okay, you know, and, and, and I think one important point here too, is that I think it's important to wait until we actually form this group and hear from the community about what their concerns are. And then we can maybe take approaches based on those concerns. I think that's the whole point of formulating this group is learning from them. What are your concerns? What's the data you want to see, you know? And, and once we get that, I, there's all sorts of different directions that we could take that. And Counselor Allen, I would assume that that's going to be one of the ones that will be at the forefront very quickly to, to review. So I just want to, to verify or validate what you said, that it is something that we would absolutely look at and lots of different models that we, we would be able to look at to, whether that be private consultants, as Chief Coleman talked about, or other models, that will be something that'll be critical to this group.
So Robbie, can I ask a clarifying question on that? When you say that's important to this group, you're it sounded like for most of that, you were talking about the kind of use of force review board. So in my mind, that's a more internal board. Were you also making reference to the public board too, or no?
Yes, in fact, most of what I just said was about the public board.
Oh, okay.
Later on that. So the internal use of force review board would be, would have a very specific direction to, to look at very specific cases, right? Just to make sure we have multiple sets of eyes on those cases. The external community, I'm not, I'm getting these words wrong, Community Police Advisory Group. Their role would be to do exactly what we're talking about now, which is what things do we need to look at as Hillsborough? You know, as the city of Hillsborough, as the Hillsborough Police Department, what issues are you concerned about? You know, what are you hearing from the different communities that you represent? And this would be, I would again, assume at the forefront, having individuals on there that represent the Latino community, that represent the black community, that'll be critical. And so we can actually have those, those dialogues and discussions with them. And then based on those discussions, that's how we, that's how the police chief and the city will know what direction to go from there.
I have a question. So this is from my experience in the military, but if there is a complaint put forward and the initial supervisor looks at it like a sergeant, and let's just say it's sexual harassment. And let's say the sergeant says, nothing there. And then that officer goes, does a shift change and goes to another sergeant and there's another complaint. And let's say that sergeant says there's nothing there or finds something. Did I see in the, in the briefing that that's tracked? So for example, if you have an officer who's continually being complained about regarding sexual harassment, for example, would that come up? Would that be able to be tracked?
The short answer is yes. I want to be clear though, Counselor, we, we don't have a formalized early intervention system, but all of this information, especially on any complaint of harassment, is absolutely going to be tracked in that database. If for some reason that didn't occur, that would be a separate matter that we need a separate inquiry. So to answer your question, yes, we do maintain that.
Thank you.
So actually, can I ask a clarifying question on that? Thank you so much for bringing that up, Beech. Because I was under the impression, and maybe I'm only thinking about the more serious stuff, but there's a certain time period at which kind of, because my interpretation, and Beech, please tell me if I'm wrong, was that if someone were to make a complaint and that complaint were to be unfounded, I can't remember the words, but basically not true in a varying degree.
Supervisor says no, it's
Yeah, the supervisor says no. Those things fall off eventually, based on my understanding of the, they don't? Okay, thank you. That's actually really helpful for me.
Yes, we maintain those. And, you know, what I can assure you is if, is if we, we got a complaint for lack of a better term, you know, yeah, we can reopen that and we can re-inquire if the investigation was deficient. So no, they don't. It's a good question, but they don't, they don't drop off. Good question.
Thank you. Now is just one example, but I'm assuming you can see trends, right? If, if the officer continues to do whatever, whether it's sexual harassment or bias or whatever, it's all tracked, I'm assuming. Yeah, I'm seeing nods. Okay, thanks.
So if, and thank you, good, good questions. Here's, here's one that hasn't been brought up and it's one that, that I was asked about, didn't have an answer, but I said I'd bring it forward. If one of our, if, if one of our employees, you know, and for the sake of argument, you know, a member of HPOA is responding, you know, to a call in another community of mutual aid, kind of a situation. You know, could their actions in another city or an unincorporated Washington County trigger this kind of, I guess, oversight or response? Or would it only be for, you know, calls of service within our city limits? And the flip side of that is if we have somebody from another law enforcement agency come into Hillsborough, would their actions, because they are in our city, be subject to this? Or because they're not part of Hillsborough Police Department, you know, they would not be, there would not be any oversight, if you will, from, you know, our public, public committee?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and certainly Deputy Chief Leader can weigh in too. I would just say, you know, circumstances like that are unique unto themselves every time. So it's in the, I would have to speak in the most general sense. But the way I would describe it is Hillsborough police officers receive their authority through the state of Oregon and the city of Hillsborough. Therefore, wherever they undertake police authority actions, they are under our purview and we would review their actions. Now that is an internal approach. If a police officer took action in this, in our city, or if we went perhaps into another county, there, there is still the potential that that would be reviewed by another entity, such as the district attorney's office as to their actions. So, you know, if there was, for instance, a, a, a use of deadly force, that's going to fall under the purview of the presiding district attorney. And then the internal investigation as to whether that individual followed department policy and procedure would fall to that, the agency from which that officer came from.
Thank you, Chief, and also thank you for being here tonight.
Does anybody else have any, have any questions? Oh, Counselor Martin?
I have comments and, and, and I don't think questions, but some of my comments aren't super well baked. So, so they may come out as like partial questions and stuff. First off, thank you staff for all the work that you're doing. Thank you everyone for being here. This is a five hour meeting. And, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're going. I'm really appreciative of that. First off, I really like the initial recommendations. I, I like the fact that we're going to have the use of force review internally, getting more eyes on that, basically making sure that we're, we're just being thorough on that process. Also on the oversight side internally, you know, that's the other thing I really like seeing is just saying, hey, this isn't just something that the public is doing. We want to make sure that we're, you know, living up to our word too. I'm really glad that we're doing that, that, that we're doing that. That's really great to me. I think those are the types of things that help the wheels move a little bit better, you know? I'm also glad that based on this conversation, the public board is going to be a little bit more in depth than I probably had envisioned it when you first described it. So that's really good because that's one of those where I think giving folks the ability to provide input is really important. You know, as you were saying, I am very curious about, I'm just going to go through my notes, even though it's going to be scattershot, I'm sorry, five hours in and my notes are in two different places. Next, one of the gaps that I do see is complaints. And based on what we've talked about so far with the way the public board is going to be positioned and kind of what it's going to focus on, my guess is that complaints are going to fall under there. Not necessarily a complaint by complaint review, but a higher level analysis of looking at what, who, who these complaints are coming from, where they're going to, how, how we're responding to these complaints. Am I correct on that? So I'll probably pause mid through my things just to say, hey, Sandy, is this right? On the complaints, is that what we're envisioning is the public board has a little bit more oversight on that? Probably not on a case by case basis, but, you know, the data and availability.
Well, I guess my thought on that would be it kind of depends on what they say, right? That's, I would go back to, you know, what I mentioned earlier, we want to convene this group and then hear from them about what their concerns are. And if part of their concerns are the complaint process or the number of complaints, then I guess, you know, that's, that's something that that group could, could tell the chief and we could begin down that road. I wouldn't say that would be a kind of a pre-prescribed role of that group. I think that we have a pretty lengthy complaint process in place already. And, but again, if, 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 if that's something that this, this group, this advisory group has in mind, then that would be something they would talk about with the police chief and figure out what that would look like. Is there anything you wanted to add on that? I don't want to get ahead of you on that.
Yeah, I, I agree, Robbie and Counselor Martin. I do think that, you know, there really were, you know, I would be, you know, I'm sure certain individual incidents, as they come up and come to the attention of members of that, we would spur conversation. As far as the mechanics of a review, probably not necessarily in there. But I, I think that, you know, where a lot of the value can come there is from, you know, what the philosophy of the police department ought to be as it relates to policing in Hillsborough? And how do the policies that we implement affect that? And helping us find the blind spots that have traditionally existed when we implement a policy, making sure that it's as, as much of 360 degree analysis. And as we implement, you know, what do we, and maybe even perhaps, you know, in those areas of the budget where we put money behind direction and philosophies, input into that and suggestion.
Thank you for that. Yeah, based on what I'm hearing, it does sound like for sure this board is going to have to have at least one FPE.
this board is going to have to have at least one FPE potentially devoted to it, uh, my understanding on how public things work. Um, one thing I would say on the complaints, based on your responses, I, I, I would want to suggest that that be something that at least be considered as one of the first things to show them. And one, one of the things I think about is like the, the couple page report that you provided about use of force complaints, et cetera. You know, something that's further in detail than that seems like something that's of the purview and scope of that board. So that, that's my thought there. I really appreciate your responses. Um, uh, my next note is something that's probably obvious, but I just want to make sure in the spirit of continuous involvement, I think it makes sense to check with the public and see, you know, not everyone's going to read the 400-ish pages at the end of this packet to, um, go through what each of these oversight models are and which they think work best for the community. But I want to make sure that if someone did and someone does have opinions, we're making sure we're, we're, we're soliciting that, we're welcoming them in to be able to get that, that input. Um, uh, this kind of goes back to something we had talked about earlier. Do we have an idea of count or requirements for the public board? We talked a little bit about community affinities, affiliations, uh, BIPOC folks that we might want. Um, do we have an idea yet about the number of people or is that still kind of a to be determined thing?
Yeah, Counselor Martin, that's something frankly, we wanted to make this recommendation to Council first before we started diving into the details about exactly what it will look like. And so I guess I would just reiterate, our, our goal would be to have a very wide, um, perspective, wide range of perspectives on that board. So, uh, as far as numbers go, we haven't really talked too much about numbers and that's, that's the work that would start, um, if the Council is, is okay with that approach.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh, next up is, um, I really appreciated Kyle, what you said about independent auditors. Um, I do think that we as, uh, as a city, I think, I think the police department has shown us that, um, that they engage with external partners to improve in that regard. Um, I do appreciate that emphasis, but I, that, that's one area where my understanding thus far is the combination of the work that the police, uh, the police department does, that just make itself better. You know, just that day, daily, the daily thing, plus the use of force review, plus this policy group should be a good proxy to where if there is an issue that comes up, it seems like one of those three nets, so to speak, would catch it and, and, and look at that for review. Um, granted, that is more reactive than proactive, but I just wanted to, my thought on that was, I, I, I think the, the, the way that, uh, the city has set it up as far seems to make sense to me. Um, I'm glad we talked about data availability and gap, data gathering because I think that's really important. That's been something that's kind of, uh, underpin all of our conversations, making sure that we really do have access to as granular of data as possible. Um, you know, I know that the police department has a lot of data. Um, I also don't know where it is. I know when I first bought my house in 15, uh, there was, uh, data about where crimes occurred and kind of what, what, what the type of crime was. I don't see that on the website anymore. Maybe it's there and I just can't find it. But, um, you know, like granularity of data, being able to call and interpret data in the way that one wants to identify it, uh, I think is important in this process. So I'm glad to hear that that data availability is going to be, uh, there for the public board. Um, one of the things Steve's comment brought up to me was actions while serving on regional task forces. So I think of, I can't remember the SWOT acronym for the Washington County. I think of that. I think about the gang task force, um, when, if I'm, or no, the drug interagency task force as well. Those would all be, um, similar to what you were saying before, Chief. Uh, if a, if a Hillsborough police officer were serving on one of those, they would be subject to these types of reviews and stuff as well. Is, is that correct?
Yes, Counselor. Um, you know, they're, they're governed by memorandums of understanding, which are, um, reviewed, um, by the city attorney. And so, but those memorandums of understanding typically follow that, that basic, um, outline that I gave you that ultimately, um, it's the agency's individual decision as to who is assigned to those task forces with co-op, cooperation. Um, there is one, um, aspect to them that's a little different where there's usually a, a home agency, which is ultimately responsible for the day-to-day leadership of it. Um, so there are certain, um, things that are designated for that home agency, but, uh, by and large, and, um, not thinking of any exceptions off the top of my head, it still follows that basic rule of, um, the place from which your authority emanates is the place which, um, does the internal employment investigation.
Great.
Uh, you know, when you use force as a Hillsborough police officer, you are governed by our, our use of force standards and our use of force policies and our contact standards.
Great, thank you. Um, a couple of things from my, from my notes, uh, in reading this thing. What is an example of a de minimis complaint? So something you would hear and just kind of immediately, I, I, that was a specific phrase. Um, I was just curious what a de minimis complaint is.
Sure. Generally speaking, that's going to be something that even, even if proven, um, to be true, may not even constitute a violation or it could be a very, very low level. Uh, here's an example. Um, you know, I was behind a patrol car. This is the patrol car number, the approximate date, the approximate time. Uh, the officer made several lane changes and they just didn't appear to use their turn signal. Um, certainly something we'd like to, you know, obviously be responsive to, but it's also for lack of a better term, um, not overly substantial at that point.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, a couple of things that came up throughout the, uh, the, the readings, which were very thorough, in-depth. Thank you very much for them. Uh, they, they made my daughter's naps that much more entertaining. Um, a couple of things that I didn't see in the recommendations that I was curious to see if, uh, you know, maybe this policy board, the public board is something that I'm not, uh, the scope is a little wider. But a couple of things I saw were, um, so citizen complaint hearings. So let's say, for example, you know, I appreciate the internal side of saying, hey, we're, if someone gives a complaint, if they want to hear back from us, we're going to tell them, we looked into it. This is the result of the complaint. I think that's a great step forward. The next step forward would be if someone gets that and goes, hey, I don't agree with this. Um, do we have a process for that right now? Uh, the word in there was a citizen complaint hearing or mediation. Do we have a process for that? Or would that be something this public board would be responsible for?
Um, I, I'm going to defer to, uh, Chief and Deputy Chief Leader on that one, if that's okay.
Yeah, we, I, I, to be in, uh, to be as transparent, as transparent as possible. Um, it's not a formalized process. Certainly, um, if an individual received a letter from us and they disagreed with the findings, um, we would allow them to contact us and they could certainly contact the Office of the Chief or re-contact, uh, Office of Professional Standards. But I will say that, um, you know, perhaps that's, that's a place where we should have a formal outline of, you know, what are, what we do when we, um, have a person who's dissatisfied or wants, you know, they are form letters. They, you know, they potentially would want more details. We just have to weigh that against, um, laws, uh, labor rights, things like that. It would have to be fleshed out, but, um, it's, it's a, you know, we certainly want, uh, to get as much information to people who have taken the time to say, hey, you know, I think this deserves to be looked at as possible and allowable.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely something I would, I would ask, uh, is that we have some kind of recourse. Um, I, thank you for providing greater detail about the form letter. My, my, my initial thought was it was going to be a little bit more specific. Uh, so that would probably be, um, I, I appreciate looking into it as well, say there. Um, I'm going to get back up to my other notes. Um, okay. Uh, next one would be an early warning system based on the number of complaints, violations and, and stuff. Uh, you know, I, I, I'm not sure if that's something that merits being kind of a public board, but do we have an internal kind of early warning system of, hey, these people are getting, uh, this, this officer is getting a good deal of complaints over the last couple of months, uh, similar to what, uh, Beech said earlier of these same types of unsubstantiated claims keep popping up for one person. Do we have something internally for that?
We, we have, um, so we're an agency of a size to, frankly, um, we, we see that without having to have much technology behind it, uh, because we have the, the combination of, um, uh, we're a medium-sized agency. I, actually, we're considered a large agency, but we have enough supervisory, uh, positions in place to where the communication is good. Uh, we also have, um, a low incidence of complaints. So we're quite cap, you know, we're usually, um, very good at, um, knowing when a person is struggling. You know, it goes across the board as far as employee wellness too, knowing when people are going through life circumstances. And, you know, all of those things weigh in to wondering if, if there's something you can do to help an employee get through a difficult time or if there's somebody who's not a good fit for the organization to address that as well. We do have the capability of turning on a formal tracking, um, early intervention system. Um, it just requires, again, it, it, it is a labor issue, um, not, not insurmountable by any means. Um, HPOA is, um, always, as, as Vice President Turner said, they're always interested in maintaining the standards of the police department. So it's just, to this point, the volume hasn't merited that more formal system, but we've, um, we have the capability and we're constantly weighing, you know, if and when we should do that.
Great. Thank you for that. And yeah, uh, similar to what you said, thank you so much, uh, Leah, and, and on behalf of the HPOA, of trying to be partners in this, of working to be sure that we are all working in the same direction together. Uh, it's very heartening to see, uh, especially with high-profile examples elsewhere where that isn't the case. And that's, we're really lucky as a city to have that. Um, the final thing I, uh, want, just, just, I'm going.
Anthony, if I can jump in here for a second, because these are good, good questions. Um, but I'm also aware that it's after 11:00. And so I'm trying to think in terms of the specific recommendation that we're going to be making tonight, uh, some of these questions might be, um, answerable via email, you know, um, you know, and, um, you know, and not necessarily.
Funnily enough, similar to the last time, uh, I think this happened, I had one more thing and it's not that relevant. So we can keep going.
Thank you. Um, so I will throw that out then, you know, to, to Council. Sorry, Robbie, I don't mean to, to jump in, but, um, I'll ask, you know, Council for other, for other feedback and thoughts.
I'll jump in, uh, just based on the stats, uh, you know, 0.1% use of force. I definitely agree with Counselors Allen and Allcare on the stats. Um, but I think the policy and process advisory system that, you know, that going that route makes sense to me right now, based on not just that stat, but all the stats we've seen. And also, if we need to change, we can, right? If we, if something happens where we see triggers, we can change it. So I think this is a good fit for, you know, what we have right now. And I appreciate what the department's doing and Leah, what you're doing. So, uh, that's my comment. And thank you.
And if I may, just really quick, I, I didn't focus enough on my appreciation for what was put forward. I, I think this is a wonderful step in the right direction. Um, you know, this is part of what I was trying to get to with the Human Rights Committee. And I really, I like the internal focus. I like the focus on making our policies better. Um, so I don't want to, uh, uh, damage the, the good work that you've done. I think this is important. And I just want to say thank you to everybody that, uh, worked us to get to this point.
Mayor, would you like me to wrap it up then? You're still muted, but I think you said sure. So, I would just, uh, thank you all for the input. I think we got some, some good input. Um, I'm sensing that there's, um, consensus that to, to move forward with these recommendations. And I know there's been additional recommendations put forward as well by a couple of you. So thank you for that. Um, and I just wanted to again, say thank you to those that presented, but not only those presented, but those behind the scenes have been doing a lot of work. Rahim didn't, um, he had a part of the presentation, but he put in a ton of work in leading this, this internal work group. And I just wanted to thank him as well and everybody that's been participating. So thank you. And, and we look forward to taking these next steps and working with the community to start, uh, looking at that, uh, Community Police Advisory Board. So thank you.